Thank you all for joining us this evening. This is the April 28, 2020 hearing for the Health Committee. I'm Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chairman of the Committee. Also in attendance from the City Council is Council President Brandon Scott. I believe we also have seen Councilmember Risinger, I believe has called in. Councilmember Slyfer is on the call. I'm not sure. Councilmember Puket's on the call, so I'm trying to scroll through a couple pages here. And I don't see Clark or Henry, but they should be joining us, the other members of the committee will be joining at some point in the evening. Also in attendance, we have a host of representatives from the President's Office, Mayor's Office, multiple city agencies, and Baltimore City Public Schools. We are reconvening the hearing for Council Resolution 20-0194 to discuss and give an update of Baltimore City's strategic response to the coronavirus pandemic here in Baltimore City. Before we start, I'm asking that all speakers and panelists mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak, because I know some folks have called in. Make sure that you're speaking slowly and clearly. And after you're finished, make sure that you mute again once you're done speaking. With that, we want to turn it over to Council President Scott to give some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone. I just want to thank the Chair and everyone for all their great work throughout this crisis, this COVID-19 crisis. This, of course, is just us allowing you guys to come back. We're going to ask some questions, but to update us where we are, the work that has been happening on around the great work and teamwork that has been happening each and day across the, every day across the city of Baltimore. We know that we will make it through this crisis together as we continue to move forward and work together. So I just look forward to hearing the information tonight and asking some questions. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, and second that as well. I want to thank all of you, all of our agency and city staff and frontline workers who are really putting in a tremendous amount of work right now to keep things on the track in obviously very difficult circumstances as all of us are working remotely, including having virtual City Council hearings. So just thank you all for your time. We want to jump right in. So I'm going to hand it to Kalen. I'm going to open with a presentation from the Health Department, but I'm going to hand it over to Kalen to, I believe there's a presentation, so that he can handle the screen sharing and everything else that comes with running the WebEx.
I'm pulling it up. Health Department, you can get started.
And we're going to go right to Dr. Zarazas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Burnett, Council President Scott, and other Health Committee members, as well as other council members on the line. So Kalen, just to be clear, are you pulling up the slides or am I sharing my screen?
I'll be pulling it up. You should have it.
Perfect. So again, thank you all for this opportunity to really provide some high-level updates around the Health Department's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our last Health Committee hearing was on March 5th, so certainly a lot has changed since then. We all know that. But I think I will say what remains consistent is certainly this continues to be a very rapidly evolving situation. We're still learning a lot about the virus. We're still learning a lot about its symptoms, its course, whether or not people have immunity. So, you know, as I kind of gave a disclaimer back in March when we did our initial talk, a lot of the data and information we're talking about is certainly up to date as of this morning, and certainly things are subject to change. For the most up-to-date data, I would always recommend going to our website, coronavirus.baltimorecity.gov for additional information. As you can anticipate, seeing changes to guidance and recommendations. With that, I think Kalen's still working to pull things up, but I'll just start chatting through what we were going to talk about. So tonight I do plan to cover our dashboard, so go over some of the data that you can find on our website. Additionally, I'll be reviewing some of our primary objectives as the local health authority, specifically minimizing the spread of COVID-19, the work that we're doing around protecting vulnerable populations, the work we're doing to protect our healthcare workers, the support of medical surge planning throughout our city, and leveraging partnerships to bolster our city response. If you can go down to the next slide, Kalen. And the one after that. Perfect. So this is a screenshot of our dashboard. If you've checked it out since this afternoon, it has changed slightly. But this slide really represents our COVID-19 case count dashboard and can be found on our website. This data is provided to us by the Maryland Department of Health, so we do a daily pull-down of this data for our dashboard. And you can see a count, the count dated by day by day. You can see it broken down by age category, gender, and one available race as well. So rates per population are also provided and compared to the state of Maryland overall. And based on our calculations, what we would say is the average age of a COVID-19 case in Baltimore City is about 52 years old. The average age of a person who dies due to COVID in the city is 73 years old, with being 70-year-old for men and 77-year-old for women. MDH has not yet released the average age for state-level data. You might also notice on the dashboard that a large number of our observations have unknown race information, and that's, again, because of kind of the rapidly changing nature of the COVID-19 pandemic. Initially, the state had to really speed up reporting very quickly to local jurisdictions, so some initial death records did not include race information. And the same is also true for some of the positive results that were sent to the state. The normal process that we collect race data, such as interviewing cases or funeral homes entering through the death certificate, it does take additional time. So due to the speed of reporting, race data is missing initially, but will become more complete over time. Next slide. So this next slide really is a map. Again, this has shifted a bit since this afternoon, but it represents the number of confirmed COVID-19 cases per zip code. The darker shaded area obviously points to an area of higher number of cases. I think it's important to note that there are clusters of cases in certain locations, so perhaps a nursing home, which would increase the case numbers in a particular zip code, but that level of disease is not necessarily spread evenly across that zip code. So we must also remember that making a lab-confirmed COVID-19 diagnosis is very dependent on testing availability and access, which we know has been limited in Baltimore City and Maryland, as well as across the nation. So that's why our agency has certainly been partnering to expand testing, which I'll discuss momentarily, but I just want us to keep that in mind as we look at some of the data, that there are certainly going to be some limitations to it. Next slide. So the first major objective that I indicated that we would talk about is just minimizing the spread of COVID-19. A big part of minimizing that spread is around messaging. Very early on, I think the city was very proactive about getting appropriate messaging around there about preventative measures, about social distancing, and we've continued our messaging efforts in multiple ways through the city's Joint Information Center. So we continue to work closely to provide that information to the public. Our JIC receives support from the Health Department, as well as other agency representatives, to make sure that the messaging is timely and accurate. We are able to quickly craft new messaging and spread it through the right messenger to really reach all of our city residents. Specifically, we pay close attention to finding ways that we can push analog and low-tech messaging. Certainly, we have our billboards, we have our MTA posters, we have our kiosks, we have flyers that we're handing out as well, and some direct small-business outreach, loudspeaker PSAs from city vehicles, using telephone town halls. So again, really trying to find innovative ways to reach individuals who may not be on social media or may not be on the internet with the same consistent messaging. Additionally, we use our social media to promote messaging as well, and we do daily community briefing emails. Again, we think it's important that we work with, partner with elected officials, community-based organizations, and others outside of government to also spread the messaging. Next slide, please. So in addition to messaging, testing availability is also important with helping us minimize the spread of COVID-19. In order to minimize the spread, we certainly have to recognize where the disease burden is. And though testing access does remain limited, we're working to bring more access to areas that are identified to be in need. So through a partnership with LifeBridge Health, we're currently supporting a testing site at Pimlico, and that site has been up and running and city-supported since April 10. Additionally, last week, we stood up both the Druid Hill site and the Clifton Park site. All of our testing sites do still require doctor's order and a previously scheduled appointment. We are soon thinking about exploring mobile testing. And certainly, as testing becomes more available, this would be, I feel like, a very viable option for city residents who may not have access to transportation. I also want to note that our Druid Hill sites and our Clifton Park sites do allow for a walkthrough protocol, so they don't require vehicle access. For now, for residents who may not have access to a primary care physician and have questions about COVID, we do encourage them to call 211 if they're experiencing any symptoms, because, again, you're still required to have an appointment and ideally some level of assessment by our provider prior to a test being ordered and an appointment being scheduled. Next slide, please. So as we continue to work on minimizing the spread of COVID-19, I can't overstate the importance of the ability to effectively do contact tracing in the months to come. So contact tracing is really the work then at the local Health Department to identify someone who's had a lab-confirmed positive test, with subsequent interviewing of that individual to understand their risks of disease, as well as their risk of exposing others to disease. So as we identify who they came in close contact with during the time they were able to spread disease, the team reaches out to their close contacts to learn more and provide information on what they should do to quarantine if necessary or self-isolate if they have symptoms. Next slide, please. So below is just kind of a snapshot of some of the information that we ask residents as we're doing contact tracing. It's important, again, for us to understand the symptoms that they're having, the date of symptom onset, which helps to guide when we go back to those initial exposures, to understand who their exposures were during the time when they were contagious, as well as the environment in which they live or work in. Are they in a congregate setting, which is a higher-risk area for spread of disease? Next slide, please. So this is just a visualization of contact tracing, again, with the aim to identify who that initial positive case would have come in contact with and subsequently reach out to those individuals so that they understand what to look for in the coming days. Next slide, please. Now, when we identify someone who's had contact with COVID-19, again, we would request that they quarantine if necessary. And again, this guidance may change, but right now, we certainly follow the CDC guidance around what individuals who've been exposed should do. We will be performing contact tracing in months to come. In lieu of having a vaccine, this is one way to really help us to minimize the spread of COVID-19. But it's important to note, it's not a way for the government to track people illegally. It really is to help us understand current disease spread with the purpose of reducing that spread further. Next slide, please. So another one of our key priorities is protecting vulnerable populations. So we work very closely with our nursing facilities, our homeless shelters, assisted living facilities, and congregate senior housing to ensure that they're informed about infection control and have the necessary PPE to keep their workforce and residents safe. In partnership with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, Healthcare for the Homeless, and the Mayor's Office, the city established isolation and quarantine hotels for unstably-housed residents who were either positive for COVID-19 or waiting results of testing. Additionally, we removed a number of unstably-housed residents who were medically vulnerable because of their age or underlying health conditions to individual hotel rooms in an effort to protect them from COVID-19. Thus far, as a 427, there are 157 homeless individuals in hotels, 220 homeless individuals in isolation, and 150 homeless residents also in temporary emergency social distancing shelters. Additionally, the state has supported our efforts through state strike teams at our long-term care facilities and are developing a very similar concept for our homeless population. It's also important to note that the city's providing those similar types of services, where we would have potentially a clinician, maybe an epidemiologist, go into a facility, again, providing education around infection control, helping them identify ways that they may be able to cohort or group together patients with like symptoms. That is a big part of the work we're doing around vulnerable populations. Next slide, please. So in addition, when we think about protecting vulnerable populations, I mentioned a little bit of our work around congregate living facilities. A big part of our work, too, is also around supporting our older adults. So early on, having very focused and targeted messaging for our older adults around social distancing, the importance of staying home and getting additional support from family and neighbors. We've partnered with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, as well as the Department of Planning around a food distribution plan, and we are part of the larger citywide effort. Over the last six weeks, we have delivered over 52,000 meals to our older residents in 42 residential sites, and almost 60,000 meals have been delivered to private residences. Yesterday, the Salvation Army actually started their work at M&amp;T Bank Stadium, where the City Department of Transportation delivered 7,000 meals to 3,500 older residents, and we're now delivering meals to 138 senior residential sites. So, you know, I mention these numbers in part because some of this is the work the Health Department was doing prior to this program, or prior to COVID-19. However, under COVID-19, we very quickly ramped up our meal delivery services to support our older adults, who we know were very vulnerable. So we appreciate the work that we've been able to do with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Additionally, we've rolled out a campaign with the support of Johns Hopkins and the ARP called the Lean On Campaign, which, again, is focused on messaging to older adults about how they can help get food during the emergency. We rapidly expanded our MAP Call Center, which is a resource center for older adults to call in and be directed to additional resources or to sign up for meal delivery programs as well. Next slide, please. Another key component around our response is really protecting our healthcare workforce. They're on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic, and they help to ensure that care to our residents, so that our residents can stay healthy. So I think it's important to note that one of our functions out of our Office of Public Health Preparedness and Response is distribution of the personal protective equipment. So it comes to us from the state, which may purchase it or receive it from the national stockpile, and we subsequently distribute it to our local healthcare facilities, including hospitals, long-term care facilities, and assisted living facilities. To date, actually, as of today, we've actually received six allocations from the state since March 19, and we distribute that, those PPE based on a state-informed formula. Over 100 orders of PPE have gone to 47 healthcare partners, and over 200,000 units of PPE have been given out. Additionally, we work very closely with our hospitals and our long-term care facilities. We have very regular conversations. We have weekly hospital CEO call, which is an opportunity for us to understand what their challenges are on the ground. Additionally, we have weekly calls with our federally qualified health centers, as well to identify any challenges they're facing and understand how we can give support. And we have safety with our long-term care facilities. Next slide. So as a part of supporting medical surge planning, we work very closely with other city agencies, so the Fire Department, as well as Office of Emergency Management, and our Hospital Emergency Planners Group. And that group is actually from the hospital to ensure that, again, the lines of communication, as well as other departments.
Sorry. One second, Dr. Zarazas. Can everyone make sure that you're muting yourself? We're getting a lot of background noise.
Mr. Chair, that would be Ms. Janet Abrams. We're going to need Ms. Janet to make sure she's muted. She's come muted a few times.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that, Doc.
Yep, no problem. So our Health and Medical Command, again, is a team consisting of folks from the Health Department, the Baltimore City Fire Department, as well as hospital emergency planners, again, ensuring that the lines of communication are open in the event of medical surge. This is the group that really helps with coordination and movement of residents, if necessary, to a lower or different level of care. We also have developed an internal resource dashboard, which allows us to visualize the number of beds, the number of vents available, staffing availability across all our city hospitals. This is, this actually, part of the state was made public just today on an updated dashboard, and this, again, supports planning in the event that surge might occur. Next slide, please. So additionally, the city has really worked to leverage partnerships with the state and through a public-private partnership, so recognizing that, you know, this work requires collaboration and support from other agencies, from our healthcare institutions, from other entities in the city that really have the same and invested interest in ensuring the safety and health of our residents here. So we work closely with the Maryland Department of Health, who has been supportive at our testing sites. So they provide some staffing at our testing sites. Additionally, we work closely with University of Maryland Medical System, as well as Johns Hopkins and Care First, to form a public-private partnership. Since it was formed a couple weeks ago, we've also had other hospital partners join in. I mentioned LifeBridge has helped with supporting testing at our Pimlico site. So, you know, I bring this up to say we can't and we don't do this work alone. It really is a team effort from other agencies throughout the city, as well as other partners. And I think that is my last slide.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zarazza, for all the hard work of you and your team coordinating and leading this response. With that, I would want to start with Council President Scott, if you have any questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Zarazza, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that. I had to find my mute button again. Dr. Zarazza, I want to talk about two things that you mentioned in your slide about contract tracing and outreach, and want to talk about them specifically for how we're going to do that for African-American neighborhoods and the neighborhoods in the city that have been most impacted by COVID, and also the neighborhoods that have similar demographics. As you know, this is an issue that's extremely concerning to me, and you well know, I know that you guys have some efforts underway that I want you to talk about, that we, when you're trying to reach these sometimes hard-to-contact neighborhoods and individuals who also sometimes have a adversarial relationship with either city government, health institutions in a neighborhood, and in some cases both, we have to try to break through that. Can you talk about what our plan is to do that and how we're going to push and ramp that outreach up, and of course, in a safe way? Because what comes to my mind is how we're going to doing that, is a lot like how we used to do with HIV, you know, but literally going out and doing that. But what's the plan, coordinated plan for both the contract tracing there and that coordinated outreach, should I think, go hand in hand?
Yeah, so I'll talk a little bit about the outreach, and I'm fortunate in that our lead on contact investigation is actually on the call Dr. Adina Greenbaum, who's an infectious disease specialist, and has also led contact tracing efforts for other diseases, HIV, tuberculosis. So certainly with the outreach, I think the Joint Information Center has done a very good job of doing focus groups and really seeking input from the community on how we should better target our message for populations that are harder to reach, for minority populations who may have medical or government mistrusts. I think using paper flyers and signage and print ads is a very, a way that's really been targeted, again, towards that population, who may not necessarily have access to, again, internet or Instagram or some of the other kind of social media outlets that we use. So I do think that they've done a good job of that. Additionally, I've been able to speak on some of the radio programs, specifically for African-Americans, just to, again, target the myths and rumors that may exist. Have also been invited to one NAACP Town Hall, and subsequently also doing a Greater Baltimore Urban League webinar as well. I think, again, to try to focus the messaging on populations that are more strongly affected. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Greenbaum to talk a bit more about the contact investigation piece for hard-to-reach populations.
This is Adina Greenbaum from Baltimore City Health Department. And I think, President Scott, you brought up an excellent point, which is how I was thinking of responding to your question, is that we do contact tracing with these populations that are sometimes harder to reach or might not be as engaged in the medical system, or might not have access to the medical system, as well as others, all the time. That's what we do with the Health Department, and we apply, even though we certainly need to take into consideration unique aspects of COVID, the foundation of what we do remains the same. So I think we're fortunate in that we have that experience that we can then build on to be able to make things more specific for COVID. But having that experience of doing contact tracing with these various communities is something that we'll rely heavily on in terms of adjusting those strategies.
Yeah, and can you, can you talk about, like, what kind of strategies we're using for this, for COVID specifically? Because I'm thinking about, I was visiting, my grandmother dropped something off, and my parents had dropped something off recently in Park Heights, and I took Park Heights from one house to the next, and when I got to the corner of Park Heights and Belvedere, which is right across from the testing site, I saw, you know, still people congregating, was able to say something to some people. But talk about how we're doing that outreach, in addition to the coordinated outreach, in addition to the contract tracing, especially in those hard-to-hit neighborhoods? Because we know in Baltimore, one, for example, one block can be different from the next, and one neighborhood is definitely different from the next. Talk about how we're trying to do that down to that level, using credible messengers from neighborhood to neighborhood.
Sure. And I would make the same distinction that I think you just made, that the contact tracing is something that's very specific, a very specific activity, where we're trying to reach a very specific individual, because from the information we have, looks like that they've been exposed or they could have been exposed, and we want to let that person know about their potential exposure and make sure that, as an individual, they understand the recommendations that are good for them, that they need to stay isolated from others, that they need to, we're telling everyone to monitor for symptoms, but they really need to monitor for symptoms. If you do develop symptoms, this is what you should do. You should call your healthcare provider, you should get tested, you should call 211. So that, the contact tracing piece is a very much, is getting in touch with those individuals. But the, and then the, getting the word out to communities as a whole about the public health messaging, no large gathering, social distancing, staying six feet apart, I would say is a related, but sort of separate effort, because they're the group that we're trying, we're trying to reach groups, we're trying to reach communities. So we have a separate group working on that, working on that outreach, and again, using similar, you know, similar techniques that we always use at the Health Department, trying to build on those and be innovative and go above and beyond what we normally do. But in terms of really talking with community leaders, talking with the social influencers in those groups, making sure that we are, you know, the message is the same, but how we reach different groups and how we reach various different at-risk groups can be a little bit different, depending on how we know that they receive information the best and the ways that we've been successful in reaching them in the past. I don't know if Jeff wants to add any, anything to that piece about sort of the community messaging part.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Mr. President. So just building off of what Dr. Greenbaum and Dr. Zarazas have already mentioned, we've been working really hard to target our messaging through community messengers, through, I want to thank Councilmember Burnett, through elected officials as well, to make sure that trusted messengers are spreading this information and getting it as widely through the community as possible. As you know, it's a challenge. One of the things we've dealt with significantly already and continue to deal with is the amount of misinformation that's out there about this disease. So that's why we've tried to make a specific point of having trusted community messengers through community-based organizations, elected officials, and others, sharing this information widely and pushing it out through analog, low-tech channels, to make sure this is reaching the right people, to combat those rumors and myths that are out there about this.
When we know in neighborhoods, especially neighborhoods where we know that there's pre-existing health conditions and the situations that are there, many of us have worked together, Health Department, we've worked together to try to break down some of those pre-existing health conditions, and the things that have existed in Baltimore for quite some time, through the structure and equity that the city has allowed to grow for quite a long time. When we talk about that, right, when we say to someone who lives in Park Heights on East Baltimore, "Hey, we think you've come in contact with COVID, you need to quarantine yourself," but for many of them, it's not possible, right? I just think about growing up in the house that I grew up at 2551 West Coast Spring Land, where our brothers and I shared a bedroom, all three of us, and our parents were in a bedroom five feet across the hall, right? How, like, what are we doing and what can we do? How like, what are what are we doing and what can we do to aid in those situations about? Because it's impossible for some people to self-quarantine themselves because of the living situations that they're living in. What what kind of advice are we giving them? Medical advice, most importantly, but then also what kind of innovative things are we doing? Or do we need to do to try to aid people in those situations?
Dr. Zaraza, I don't know. Do you want me to answer that? Yeah. Okay, sorry. So you're absolutely right. Many of the, especially the national messaging that we hear about isolation and quarantine is really difficult to apply in in more vulnerable populations and especially in urban populations. And so we spend a great amount of time talking about, you know, how how can we make isolation work in this sort of setting? The first piece, the fact of the matter is it is harder. You know, it's just harder to do that in urban, in urban settings. But but how can we get closer to to success in that? One way is to make sure that we're addressing isolation in realistic terms. So for a lot of people, it might not be possible to be exactly alone by yourself in in a house or an apartment or whatever that you're the housing facility that you have. But staying with the same group of people is better than being with shifting groups of people. So if you need to be around people and that's and that's the situation you're in, better to keep that group constant than to have that group be be shifting. So I think it's things like that of how we modify those isolation recommendations to be realistic for people and attainable for people and not to be so so far-fetched, where it's just like, well, I can't even begin to to think about doing that. A second thing that we've tried to do, which I think I'll let others provide more of the details on, is really acknowledge that, you know, it's one thing to give those isolation and those quarantine recommendations and instructions, but we really have to help support people in order for them to be able to to follow them. So what are the supports that people need in terms of access to food and access to other social services in order for them to follow those instructions? So I think I'll let others maybe provide some of the more specific examples of some of those things. But just in acknowledgement that we we recognize when we do this contact tracing, it doesn't end with the isolation instructions. There needs to be a and so how can we help you ensure that you can follow those instructions? And some of them can be really challenging for folks.
Council President, this is Cherry Ann Anthony from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. But to your question, one of the things that we did pretty early on in partnership with the Health Department was to release guidance to our emergency DC departments across the city pertaining to individuals who were either living in shelters, in congregate living environments, or in situations, to your point, where they were just unable to isolate. Maybe people are doubled up and just unable to go home where they can be able to utilize a private bathroom and completely isolate. And so we did put out guidance to the hospitals. And since then, people who are being tested have been referred to the city's isolation site where they can go and go and isolate in a motel while they either await their results or await clearance from the hospital, at which point they are discharged and free to go back to wherever they they were before. So we have worked with hospitals to to establish a protocol in place so that people who, you know, cannot isolate to their their homes independently have an alternative location where they can go.
Anybody else have a follow-up? I just didn't want to wait until everyone's finished. I guess, thank you guys both. What I'm thinking about, and I appreciate all the things that everyone has said, Cherry Ann and Adina, Dr. Zaraza, what I'm thinking about, though, and for me, it's about, let's just say, for example, I was a nurse, right, and I'm a single mom, I'm a nurse, I go, I work at Hopkins, Osana, UMD. I have three children at home, right? Like, that kind of, I think those kind of situations exist throughout the city. And I just think that we might have to ramp up how we're communicating. Because for us to to tell that mom that, hey, you know, you're just going to have to stick to being around you and your three kids and like, to that, that's traumatic in the sense that she's already putting herself at risk when she's at work or people who are, you know, picking up garbage or cleaning houses. They're putting themselves at risk already. And then they, because they live in a situation where they're not paid enough and they don't have the ability to separate themselves out, they're also being, it's traumatic for them to then say, well, you have to also just consider that your children may get sick because they can't physically separate separate from you. I just want to challenge us to figure out like, how we can, and I know that this is an ever-evolving situation, things that we can try to continue to press upon our community members to keep themselves as safe as possible as we go go throughout this crisis. The next question, the next question that I had is kind of is related to this one. But I want to know the latest projections that you guys have of when you think we will see when the peak will be for Baltimore, if we've already hit the peak. Then also, again, within that peak, do we see the the spread of the disease flattening amongst some demographics versus others that will, again, allow us to focus on trying to prevent the spread among certain communities? And in Baltimore, we've seen it certainly among our minority communities.
Well, I'll maybe answer kind of broadly, and I don't know if Dr. Greenbaum will want to chime in. I mean, I think at least preliminarily, and some of the information I've seen come out of Hopkins, it does appear that the social distancing is certainly helping. I think the large limitation, though, is just the accessibility of testing, right? So I think certainly, I think, as we look at some of the hospital numbers, the hospital surge data, we think that it's helping, right? The the social distancing seems to be helping. But I think we don't necessarily have a full picture of what the disease burden is because of the limitations in in testing right now.
Did anyone else want to chime in on that?
Yes, Mr. President, this is Councilman Riceinger. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, I just want to piggyback on what the President was saying is that if the governor, I mean, first of all, I want to thank you and your staff for what you're doing for the citizens of Baltimore. But if the governor comes back, it says that in three weeks, Baltimore, the state's going to be open for business. Where is Baltimore going to be in regards to scientifically and health-wise to curb? Flatlined? Do we have numbers where our status will be? Because especially as the President was saying, with the minority communities, you know, trying to the testing and messaging, do we have numbers? Do we know where we might be two to three weeks? If the governor declares that Maryland's open for business?
So again, I don't know that we we, at my level, can necessarily predict what we'll be in three weeks. We look at models that come from, you know, the the state as well as from Hopkins and and other entities. And again, there, you know, what they're projecting, what they're saying is certainly utilization of hospital beds, again, is is lower, I think, than anticipated. And I my my impression of the governor, based on the plan that he released, is that he really does want to do a phased response. And he's looking at kind of four primary things as he thinks about reopening businesses, which is 14 days of decreased number of cases, the ability to perform contact tracing at a very kind of wide scope, right? So having that ability, because again, as I mentioned, that helps with prevention of disease spread as well as having access to personal protective equipment for our our healthcare workers. We, I think he doesn't necessarily want to risk reopening and and seeing a resurgence in the number of of cases that would subsequently overwhelm our healthcare systems. And then and then lastly, I think it's it's, you know, in addition to those things, having widespread availability of testing. So again, so that we can understand the disease burden. So, you know, again, I think it's it's hard to say where we'll be three or four weeks out. Everything still is continuing to evolve. And certainly, as we get more access to testing, we may see greater disease burden than we anticipated.
Thank you.
So so can you hear me about?
Yeah, go ahead. And I was going to ask a follow-up, but go ahead. I'll let you finish.
So so is Commissioner, are you, are you and your staff and the administration, are you in communication with the governor, so if he decides that, I know this is all assumption, that in two weeks or three weeks, they're ready to open the state up and the city of Baltimore? Is is you and your staff, the communication to say, hey, we still have problems in Baltimore?
Yeah, good question. So so we have two ways that we primarily interact with the state. So we have regular calls at least three times a week with the Maryland Department of Health, and that involves their senior leadership. Additionally, as a part of the public-private partnership that we form with the University of Maryland Medical System, Hopkins and Care First, I'm on regular calls with one of the governor's special advisors, Dr. Linda Singh. And so have calls with her at least three times a week as well, again, to be able to share what's happening here on the ground at Baltimore. And she serves as a great advocate for us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Letitia.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. And you brought up a critical point that I wanted to to uplift into the conversation. And that's about testing and the need for it, especially in our most impacted neighborhoods. Can you, for the good of the council and the public, tell us where we are, but also what you need and how we, the council, can help you with testing? Because we know, as you said, testing is key. And then also, because we've seen health officials warn of a second wave of coronavirus returning later this year, how we're preparing for the second wave and as we're dealing with the first wave now so that we're not caught off guard, right? We were prepared better than most here because of the your leadership and the leadership of the folks around you. But how are we also preparing for that while understanding we have a deep need for testing in Baltimore right now? And how we would roll that out? For me, I'm thinking, you know, we need more, I like the walk-up sites. I think we should also have mobile testing sites where we're going out, going into particular neighborhoods where we know people are at risk, where we know there's the the pre-existing conditions, because you guys have great health data and keep that. And we can do that direct impact and direct testing to those people who are most likely to have it in Baltimore and live in the conditions for what we talked about, while also simultaneously being aware and concerned about what will happen later on in the fall or something when the second wave comes back.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I mean, I think broadly, the great thing about us having the data is we're able to use it to really drive our decisioning around where testing sites should be. And, you know, I think Dr. Greenbaum, who I'm going to refer to because she really is is, in addition to helping with our contact investigation, also leading our testing efforts and and how we think about and approach testing. You know, you brought up mobile testing, which is certainly something that the team has been thinking about and starting to to plan for the possibility. Obviously, we provide other mobile services. And so it's great that we have that existing infrastructure. But certainly, the team is 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 already thinking about it. So I'll kick it over to her.
Thank you. And President Scott, I couldn't couldn't agree with you more that not only do we need to increase testing in general, but we have to make sure that the increases that we make are accessible and available to everyone in the city and especially, you know, especially those groups that that most need it and that have traditionally struggled to access the the medical systems that we have established. So we are working on mobile testing. I couldn't agree with you more. I think that's one of the models that we need to be sure to build here. We've been in in touch with a few other cities across the country that are also developing mobile testing in similar types of community settings and have done some sharebacks with them, talking about various models with them, because there's plenty of challenges with testing in general for COVID. And then when you add on the mobile component of it, there's some additional challenges there. But we are committed to overcoming those and addressing those and establishing mobile testing. So we are knee-deep in plans for that and and really hope to make that part of the cornerstones of our testing strategy. One of the major challenges, there's several challenges with it, two that I'll mention. First, we want to make sure that we do it in a safe way. You know, one of the parts of of being in public health and being a physician is do no harm. We don't want to make a situation worse than it is. And of course, anytime we bring people together, we're increasing spread of disease. So we need to make or increasing the chance of spread of disease. So unlike other times when we do mobile work, an additional thing that we really have to think about is how do we do this in a safe way? That we're not increasing somebody's risk by coming out to be tested and to get those services? So that's the first piece that we're really mindful of. The second challenge that we're facing with testing across the board, there's a few. First is availability of test kits. That still remains an issue. There's several different pieces of equipment or supplies you need to do testing. And at various times, these have all been in a shortage nationwide. So just having accessible, having access to all the pieces that you need, the swab, the the vial that you put it in, the reactions at the lab, making sure that that is all available at the time you need it. The quantity that you need it has been has been a challenge across the nation and no different here. So we're trying to make sure that we have all of those things in inadequate supply for these efforts. And the second piece is really the personal protective equipment, PPE, to make sure that the people that we have doing the testing are protected. And really, that has been emerging as one of the largest challenges in 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 establishing additional testing sites and making testing even more available. So something that we're continuing to address pretty much on a daily basis.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Chair, I promise this is my my last question. My last two are actually not for the Health Department, but for schools and our great folks from the Planning Department.
Mr. President, we do have, we do have a list, like, we're going to ask the BCPS to do.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. No, well, then I will shut my mouth. The chair is in charge. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, sir. So I had Councilmember Pinkett up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not certain if my question is for Dr. Zaraza or Dr. Greenbaum. And if I missed it, I didn't hear the number of contact tracers that we currently have on our team.
So our team is growing every day. We are, every day, we're adding new members onto the team. So it's a very dynamic team and consistently growing team. And right now, we're at about 100 staff, working on the entire case investigation and and contact tracing effort. With with new folks added today and new folks planned to be added tomorrow.
So, excuse me, what's what's our goal for the number? That because I've heard that, I guess, knowing non-emergency times, 15 per 100,000 is sufficient. But during a pandemic like this, the the number, estimate number would be like 30 per 100,000. So where are we and what what's our goal?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We also have looked at various estimates of how many people per population are needed, and it certainly has ranged based on what we see happening in other cities around the world, where they've compared the number of people they have per population. So there is a, there's a very large range as when you look at the different models and what different people have set up. I think one thing that it, so it depends on a, so very unsatisfying answer, because the answer is, you know, it depends. One of the things that it really depends on is for how long we continue the stay-at-home orders. Because while we have the stay-at-home order, stay-at-home orders, people have much fewer contacts, you know? You had your contacts really should only be the people who are in your household. Now, of course, people do have a few other contacts, especially if they're an essential worker. So so there are exceptions to that. Now, once those stay-at-home orders are lifted and we have people, now, of course, they can be lifted gradually. So I'm not saying this would happen very quickly. But if if we go back to no stay-at-home orders at all and just like back to normal, then all of a sudden, those contacts, that list of contacts um, then all of a sudden those contacts, that list of contacts, instead of each person having, I don't know, two, four, five, six contacts maybe on average, now you're going to twenty contacts, thirty close contacts, especially since the time period we're looking at could pretend, could, could be a, a fairly long time period that we need to ask somebody when list out your close contacts. So a lot of those estimates have ranges based on when we anticipate those stay at home orders lifting and how many contacts we're gonna have to reach out to.
Yeah, uh, and, and I, and I definitely appreciate that. I, um, as Council President said earlier, um, how diligent, um, certain populations are to adhering to the executive orders varies from community to community. And so, um, while there may be an executive order in certain communities, um, you would think there is no executive order, um, in, in the way that, you know, people are um, are just continuing to be out in public. But then some of it is by necessity because some of those communities are where many of the frontline workers, you know, live. And so, um, if, if we are looking for co- contract traces or deploying them into specific areas, those are some of the areas where we probably need them the most because people are continuing to have day-to-day contact with, with multiple parties.
Agreed. And I, um, um, agree with that completely. And, and we are looking to bring on, in terms of our immediate projections, at least three hundred individuals over the next few months as temporary employees to work specifically on what you said on, on that work.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And Mr. Chair, if I can ask one, another question that's, um, kind of related. Um, I, I know that, I think, um, Council President also mentioned about mobile, um, screening and testing. But I think one thing that I'd like to see us explore is, um, expanding our home healthcare. So what, what happens when an individual is diagnosed and, you know, doesn't have, uh, I guess acute respiratory symptoms, but is told to go home? Um, I, I want to know, are we tracking the, um, I guess the death at home rate and where we with that? And then, um, what, you know, is there potential for mobile units that can provide home healthcare to individuals who, um, may be symptomatic but aren't at a place where they're hu- be hospitalized?
So I think, uh, with, I guess, the first part of the question around death data, that may be something that we could potentially parse out. Um, I'd have to, you know, confer with our epidemiologists and our internal data folks to understand what the rates are. Um, I don't know if, if Chief Matt's maybe on to talk a little bit about the, the mobile piece. I thought I saw him on here. Um, but, but the fire did have a mobile integrated health program. Um, I think that, that prior to COVID nineteen really, um, was addressing some of, um, some of the things that you mentioned, right? An individual who could maybe be cared for at home, so does need some level of intervention, um, but doesn't necessarily require a hospital stay. Um, so that, I know that's something that fire was doing. I don't know if that's something they're, they're also exploring during this particular, um, response, but we can certainly, um, connect with them and let you know.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just elevated Chief Matt.
Chief, would you, uh, like to respond?
Sure, sure. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is James Matt. I'm the Deputy Chief of VMS for the Fire Department. Um, we actually started the programs that we started to work with with regard to COVID nineteen. Um, we actually did a, 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 a triage protocol from the state of Maryland through MIMS. We also started a telephone triage line through our dispatch center where we used, um, some of our medical professionals, either, uh, a paramedic, a seasoned paramedic or a nurse paramedic, to go through our low acuity data to try to find low acuity patients and have them convalesce at home if it was indicated for them to stay at home. We tried to put in a tiered approach to that. The three tiers we started with was the actual, uh, telephone triage line. Then we were gonna look into the physician-directed telemedicine. There's a lot of legal behind that, and that's probably four to six or more weeks out. And then the third tier was to be able to leverage our mobile integrated healthcare program. We actually just started that today, Dr. Zara. So we're working through the, the hiccups. Whenever you start a new program, there's, there's a million hiccups. That's why we always do a soft start. There's something we didn't think, trying to work through those now.
Uh, thank you for sharing that. The, um, I, I, Mr. Chair, I'd love to hear more, um, as that program becomes, um, more enhanced and rolled out. I think that's gonna be a critical step. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And yeah, our plan is to, to continue to provide these updates as the, uh, we move through the pandemic. Um, uh, any other questions for help from the committee? A, uh, Councilmember Henry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine was a very simple one, which is why I was waiting. Um, I didn't see the presentation that the Commissioner went through in my inbox. Did I miss it or has that not been sent to us yet?
Uh, yeah, I believe it was sent. Sorry, I was looking over at Marguerite, uh, the, uh, committee staff. Um, she said it was sent out. Um, if you give me a second, I'll, I'll resend.
Okay, if, as long as it's there, I'll just keep digging for it later. I just want to make sure that I can pull some stuff out of it to share with, um, with the district. That's all. Because there were some good, there were some good things in it. Okay, thank you.
Me myself. Okay, um, with that, with the meeting, any more questions for help? Uh, one of, um, thank you, Dr. Sarasis. Uh, we are going to move to, uh, Baltimore Police. Uh, I believe we have Commissioner Harrison on the, on the, on the line.
I am, and, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, Chairman Burnett, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to be a part of this evening's hearing. As I mentioned at our oversight hearing the other day, my team and I and our civilian employees, and then most importantly, the brave men and women of the Baltimore Police Department, we're all working every day to further our core mission of reducing and preventing crime in Baltimore City. As we carry out this important mission, we must also continue to enact reforms within our departments so that we are policing in a fair, impartial, constitutional and in effective manner. COVID nineteen emergency has presented new and numerous challenges, including enforcing evolving orders from the governor and the mayor, protecting the health and safety of our officers and civilian workforce, and ensuring that we have the available staff and resources so that operations can go uninterrupted. Just like police departments across the country, we have to be creative in maintaining public order while also ensuring the safety of our members. So I applaud the brave men and women of the Baltimore Police Department who put their own health at risk to ensure our residents are safe. With that, I'm gonna hand it off to Deputy Commissioner Michael Sullivan, who's on the call, who will give you a more detailed briefing on BPD's efforts to enforce the governor's executive orders.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, thank you for this opportunity to kind of walk through, uh, our efforts, uh, dealing with the, the enforcement of the executive or, orders of the governor and, and to kind of clear up what those executive orders really do say. Uh, you know, first, starting off with permissible travel. I don't know, can we bring up our PowerPoint? And if you can go two slides down from that, that would be terrific. There we go. Uh, so the governor's order on permissible travel is, uh, truly about being able to obtain necessary supplies for one's household groceries, medicines, uh, household supplies like laundry. Uh, it's also, uh, for engaging in, in someone's health or safety, including medical services, medication, medical supplies, travel to and from your place of employment and engaging in outdoor exercises is what the executive order says. And if you can go, uh, two slides up and we'll talk about essential businesses and, and our efforts in, uh, enforcement efforts and dealing with, uh, the essential businesses. Uh, this is the guidance we gave to our officers. Uh, this, uh, process began, began back on March twenty-third as a result of the governor's orders closing non-essential businesses. Uh, we require our officers to investigate any complaints of businesses, uh, that are not in compliance or, or being reported as not in compliance and to engage with that business and provide a copy of the governor's order and seek voluntary compliance. Uh, if the business refuses, uh, the cases refer to our vice unit in the Social Club Task Force, who will do additional follow-up. These are seasoned detectives who have the experience to be able to, uh, uh, continue to seek voluntary compliance, which we have in the, uh, close to twenty-four cases that they have worked. Uh, the vast majority of them have resulted in voluntary, uh, closing. Uh, there has been some enforcement action, but that enforcement action has been through liquor board violations and, uh, seeking of criminal summons, uh, for other violations at the business. Uh, and, and that's been working very well for us. Uh, moving on to the next, uh, slide, which talks about the face covering that, uh, the governor put into place on, uh, uh, April eighteenth. Uh, and it's foregoing to these, uh, these essential businesses, these retail establishments. If you're on public transportation and food service and the workers who work in these areas. Uh, we've had very, very little, uh, pushback, uh, from the community and very little, uh, call from businesses and uh, most places seem to be, uh, complying with the face covering, uh, that, that is required with this order. Uh, and we've had very, very little trouble, uh, with that. Um, and then on four eighteen as well, if you can go to the next, uh, next slide. These were the additional measures that were put in place, uh, to designate signage or tape, six-foot spacing, uh, sanitizer, provide means to sanitize hands and carts in these areas and post signage at the entrance. Uh, once again, these are, these were, uh, regulations that we haven't had a whole lot of issues with, uh, going forward. And then just finally, if, uh, we can go a couple of slides ahead, it, uh, we'll talk about some of the things that we have done, uh, to enforce, uh, the social distancing, which has been probably our biggest challenge in some, some of the communities that we have been. We've actually produced a, uh, a you, a, uh, audio that we play, and I don't know if we'll be able to play it right here. Uh, let me see if we can queue that up. I don't think we can. But, uh, it's, it, it's an audio message that our officers pull up to areas where social distancing is not being adhered to. Uh, and we, we play the message to explain the importance of social distancing. Uh, and, and that's been, uh, effective when we're there, uh, but there's times that, that, that we can't be there. Uh, if you can roll to the next slide, please. And this is just the governor's orders, uh, that gives the authority. We have not charged anybody, uh, with any of these, uh, parts of the violation. Uh, we have used other, other tools, like I mentioned earlier, with some businesses that are out of compliance. As, if you go to the very last slide that we have here, uh, some of the efforts of the officers, we, we've asked our officers, when they're addressing some of the challenge, uh, areas where social distancing isn't being, uh, followed, we ask them to take pictures before, uh, when they get there and after they play the message. Uh, and we're continuing to do that in, in many of these areas. And it's, uh, been one of our challenges. I'm gonna take any questions if anybody has any.
Any, uh, questions from the committee for Baltimore Police Department? Okay, hearing none. Um, we are going to move on, uh, to the next agency. Thank you, Commissioner Harrison, to you and your team. Um, and please be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, move to the Fire Department. Anyone here on Fire?
Yes, good evening. It's, uh, Chief Matt again.
Hey, Chief, thank you.
I'm also gonna need, uh, can you elevate Tim Cullen to this board as well? Got it. Thank you. Mr. Young, can you bring up our presentation, please? Excellent. Well, good evening, Chairman Burnett, Council President Scott, and members of the City Council. As I said earlier, my name is James Matt. I'm the Deputy Chief of VMS and the Fire Department. Under the direction of Chief Ford, the Fire Department has planned for the worst and hoped for the best while we battle the COVID nineteen pandemic. Could you advance this slide, please? We are, uh, closely monitoring the city and state data, looking for trending. Uh, the city's dashboard, as well as the Health Department's dashboard, offer a wealth of information regarding COVID positive cases, deaths and trending from COVID nineteen and cumulative totals. We also actively monitor transports from assisted living facilities and skilled nursing facilities. In addition, we follow the CDC recommend recommendations regarding personal protective equipment, EMS responses, potential exposures and sick leave practices. We collaborate with other city agencies, multiple jurisdictions, all area city hospitals and the state for response planning. Some of those meetings, uh, the Health Commissioner had spoke about earlier. We have a weekly meeting with the Maryland Hospital Association and Region Three. We have frequent meetings with the MIMS Jurisdictional Roundtable at least twice per week. We have weekly communications between the Fire Department Medical Directors and the State Medical Directors. We have a daily call with the Health and Medical Command that Commissioners Araza had spoke of. And then, of course, we have our daily check-in with our public private partnerships. We've also assisted other city agencies with procurement of personal protective equipment. The Fire Department's protective measures, I'm gonna have Battalion Chief Cullen or ICO review that with you. If you could advance this slide, please.
Again, good evening. Timothy Cullen, EMS Battalion Chief, um, the Fire Department's Affection Control Officer. Uh, we've been proactive with our preventative measures to keep our workforce healthy, to avoid exposures and to avoid staffing problems. Uh, we've streamlined our sick call, call-out policy to ensure that our members do not report to work if they're symptomatic. All of our personnel are responsible for self, to self-monitor for nuanced set of COVID-like symptoms. While on and off duty, this does include a symptom and fever check before leaving their home for work. In addition to this, we implemented a supervised health screening assessment program for on-duty personnel. These are symptom checks and temperature measurements that are performed two times per shift by each unit supervisor and reported to our Health and Safety Office. This program helps us to identify workers who become ill, so we can isolate them. We can refer them to seek medical attention and place them off duty, limiting, limiting potential exposures to coworkers in the public. Uh, we shared this information with other city ag- agencies. We began mandatory surgical mask use for all personnel. We are required to wear a surgical mask anytime we're not engaged in patient care or firefighting activities. We've collaborated with other local healthcare systems and obtained testing sites for symptomatic first responders. Also, to protect our personnel, we implemented mandatory personal protective equipment on all patient care responses. We did this early on. This includes N ninety-five respirator, gloves, goggles, and in some cases gowns. Uh, since moving to this on March seventeenth, we've only had two patient care-related exposures, and those were on April sixth. To date, we've transported over two hundred patients who later tested positive for COVID. Uh, these numbers are, are sent in to us by the hospitals and by the local and state's, uh, health departments. We collect that data. They're reported after the transport time. Um, also, we currently have zero members off duty on quarantine for exposures. Uh, we implemented the CDC guidelines, allowing critical infra- infrastructure employees with potential exposures to remain on duty. We, we were able to do this because we were proactive in our prac- practices and, uh, implemented the safety measures that I have mentioned. Thank you.
Advance the last slide. Any questions for, uh, Chief Cullen or myself?
Thank you. Um, so a couple of quick questions for you. Um, can you talk about the cleanup plan for all in-service vehicles?
Sure. Uh, like me to mention that, Chief. Uh, basically, our, um, cleanup time, it, it's no different than any other call. And we actually increased it with, we, we purchased, uh, almost like a lawn spray or pressurized sprayer and, um, a, um, a cleaner that's rated for the SARS-two virus. And in addition to that, we also use bleach. We have wipes that we use for spot cleaning. So every day we clean our, um, units and then after every patient response, we spot clean as well as fully, um, decontaminate each unit. For some of the, um, higher level patients, we, we may have an, an arrest with some, um, different, um, some advanced airway techniques, we'll do, do more of a full cleaning, a full decon.
And, um, so I think you mentioned there were two, two hundred, over two hundred transports with, um, two exposures, which is a excellent ratio. Um, should things escalate? Uh, does the agency have a plan? Um, and obviously we were hoping And obviously, we're hoping it doesn't happen, but if there are impacts to staffing in the same way that we saw with the Police Department in the Southwest District, for example, can you speak to that a little bit about staffing and impacts of staffing, potential impact for staffing either now or in the future as this continues to move to a whirlwind?
Sure, sure. So, like I spoke on earlier, that we closely monitor several indicators on a daily dashboard. One of those indicators is absenteeism. Since the inception of the COVID-19 pandemic, our absenteeism rate has maintained between 2% and 4%, which is excellent. We do have plans that if we were to get in trouble, that we could leverage a commercial surge contract to bring additional assistance from the outside, but as it stands now, it's not been necessary due to absenteeism.
And to piggyback on what Chief Matts had mentioned there, with us implementing this system for the potential exposures for personnel to remain on duty, basically because we implemented the self-monitoring and the supervised monitoring, if we do have an exposure, if our provider remains asymptomatic during that 14-day window, they are permitted to work, we do follow the protective measures, they wear the mask, we monitor them for symptoms, and if they do become sick, they're to call out immediately. So it will not impact our workforce at all unless they do become ill, and then obviously we don't want them to come to work at all. But ever since we've implemented that, we've been good, and it won't affect our staffing.
And last question, are there any concerns about PPE running out? Are you, is the agency having enough to go around for all the employees as this continues to move on?
Yes, we do. We have an excellent cache of PPE. There's been different challenges on different types of PPE throughout the pandemic response. Early on, we contacted Seattle/Washington, and we're trying to glean some lessons learned from Seattle/Washington. One of the things that they did speak about was problems with gowns. We had some challenges with gowns, but we've worked through those challenges to date. As of now, we are comfortable with our cache.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee for the Fire Department? All right, thank you. We're going to jump over to Dr. Sanalisis, the Baltimore City Public School System.
Hello, thank you, Councilmember Burnett and city council members, city council president and everyone who's out this evening. I was asked to present on two primary areas, but clearly we'll take additional questions in other areas if necessary. So the first area was around food distribution and feeding. Since the beginning, since the first closure of school, as of yesterday, the 18 meal sites across those 18 meal sites, Baltimore City School, the Food and Nutrition Team has been part of the citywide effort, and at those 18 meal sites, we have served about 219,644 meals as of yesterday. The other piece that we are very proud of and very thankful for frankly, is the partnership with the World Central Kitchen, which is helping us expand our food pantry distribution. And so as of Wednesday, Friday last night, were the first days of distribution, this week, World Central Kitchen agreed to increase the number of portable meals at an additional 10 locations. So this week on Wednesday, we will, they will be ready to hand out 15,000 takeaway meals and another 17,500 meals this Friday, which will be an increase. I also want to point out to the city council that city schools made the decision early to provide meals for adults that were also coming to the meal sites. And so today, as of yesterday, we had served just under 70,000 adult non-reimbursable meals to the tune of about $278,000 of non-reimbursable meals that we've supported in our effort to make sure that families eat. And we want to send a particular thank you to the Maryland National Guard and the large number of guardsmen and women who have really helped to streamline our operations, support our operations at 14 sites, and our own school police officers who have helped to assist with social distancing in addition to their other student outreach efforts and student mentoring efforts during this crisis. The second area that I was asked to report on was an update on where we are with technology. I want to begin by thanking the mayor and the city council for your leadership and the resolution that you all passed as a body with the additional funding for helping to increase digital access for Baltimore City school students. As many of you may remember, very early in this crisis, the district moved forward with the purchase of 12,200 Chromebooks, prioritizing our high school juniors and seniors first, and then extending to additional high school students first. We reached out to families that our Office of Assessment and Accountability successfully put together with our communications team, a phone and online family survey to help us prioritize those families who did not have either devices or internet access at home. We were very successful in, you know, reaching probably about, oh, close to 35,000 students through our initial group of families. The challenge, as is probably not news to any of the council members, is that we still know that we have large numbers of families and students that we have yet to reach to get their feedback, who simply just don't have access to that survey. So we are working with our incredibly hard-working school leaders, who have a much closer and more intimate knowledge of families, to help to provide greater insight into families and young people who need that access. I will also point out that for the past two weeks approximately, we're in the third week of our device distribution, we have currently distributed, particularly at the high school levels, close to 4,000 Chromebooks and laptops. We have, we are moving into distribution at our kindergarten through eighth-grade schools this week and for the next two weeks. I will also point out, though, that even with devices, Baltimore City, like the rest of the state and the rest of the country, still suffers from very, very serious frankly challenges in internet access. We are now looking into, we have a project going now as a test site of four or five schools to really test extending Wi-Fi access using school buildings and a concentrated urban center. Some of our rural colleagues have used school buses, but here, safety concerns with, doesn't make that that most optimal option. So we are looking at this Wi-Fi extender approach from school buildings, and what we are hoping is that the success of that will give us another way of extending Wi-Fi access for families in Baltimore City. And then finally, Baltimore City Schools, I was one of probably 60 major urban school superintendents through the Council of Great City Schools, who signed a letter to Congress today, really pushing for increased federal support, not only for digital access, but quite frankly, to help buttress myself and my colleagues and the districts that we serve from what will most certainly be, you know, an extension of some of the challenges we'll face with regards to resources moving forward. And so I think those are the two major areas that the council had asked for me to give an update on, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions, either in those areas or others that the council might have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sanalisis, for the hard work and you and your staff. I know this has been extremely difficult to moving rapidly to a remote learning environment. The question I had, you actually covered all the stuff I wanted to talk about around technology, so thank you for that. I know it's been the number-one question I've gotten from constituents is laptops, tablets, how do we get access? The other question I had was, obviously, don't have to give a detailed response, but has your agency started to look at long-term planning? Should the governor push out for either virtual learning for the duration of the school year? Are there different scenarios that you all are working through? As, you know, the information that seems to be coming in drops, you know, a couple weeks here, a couple weeks there, but you talk about long-term planning that you're undergoing right now?
Without a doubt. So I would say yes to all of those questions, Councilwoman Burnett. We have, matter of fact, this is my third public forum today, and in each setting, I received very similar questions. So I would reassure both the council and the public that my team and I have begun, along frankly with colleagues across the state and the country, really what I guess affectionately call scenario planning, and that is what we have been doing. So any combination of closures, we are looking into best practices across the world, quite frankly, with countries that have opened up schools before us. We are sharing across, the Council of Great City Schools and Chiefs for Change have been two national organizations that have really provided Baltimore City the opportunity to plan. We are receiving some outside assistance from the philanthropic community and getting our full planning infrastructure, because as you know and as the council know, long-term planning for us includes any possible number of scenarios that will require everything from making sure any spaces that are used continue to be sanitized. We've received questions about what will social distancing look like, all the way to how do we make sure that if virtual learning has to occur over the next year or frankly, 18 months to two years, I know folks don't want to hear that, but our scenario planning really is taking all of that into account. So, yes, I guess that's the best way to put it, is yes, we are.
Got it, understood. Are there any other questions from the committee? I did want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Henry, vice chair of the committee. Any questions from the committee or other councilmembers on the call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Sanalisis, for all the work. We're going to move to Mayor's Office of Emergency Management. I believe, I think Snitzer is on the call to speak for them.
I am, thank you so much, Chairman, and I apologize, we're having some technical difficulties over here getting the rest of the team on, but I'm happy to give a quick update and answer any questions. So thank you so much, really appreciate the opportunity to give a quick update. So starting back in January, the Office of Emergency Management, the Health Department, the Fire Department, and the Mayor's Office began meeting regarding COVID-19. We started these meetings to regularly monitor the spread of the disease nationally and even within kind of our own region, and start to develop protocols that would enable us to kind of have a quick response. So at the last council hearings on this, for example, I think we talked a little bit about the 911 protocols that were developed early on to help us kind of monitor and track the spread of the disease in Baltimore City. So on March 13th, Mayor Young elevated the city's emergency operations center to full activation with 24/7 coverage. We were the first fully activated EOC in the state, and I could be wrong, but I believe we actually remain the only fully activated EOC in the state. That means we have emergency personnel in the EOC 24/7 who are able to respond if we have any crises related to COVID-19 in real time. So following that activation on March 18th, Mayor Young declared a state of emergency. And I just want to take a quick second to thank you, Chairman Burnett and Council President Scott, for your leadership in helping us in extending the state of emergency at last night's council meeting. We appreciate that very much. And so just really quickly, wanted to offer a little bit of context of what the Office of Emergency Management does. So we serve as a support agency to our primary agency, which in this case is the Health Department. So OEM provides logistical, planning, plan-execution support to the citywide response. That can be everything from maintaining and delivering citywide inventory of personal protective equipment and providing support to some of the humanitarian missions that are going on in the city, such as food distribution and execution of our testing sites. So, you know, again, that can be, that can be kind of a wide range of things, but, you know, happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Council President Scott?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, thank you, Chief. Just want to follow up. Do you know, talking about the EOC and us being the only ones still operating, I think that that's a great thing, but have you talked to our counterparts to see why? And then also, thinking about long-term, as we're going to be dealing with this for quite some time, do you foresee us going to some kind of hybrid model for how we're dealing with this as an emergency, but also considering staff fatigue and the inability for them to be able to recharge and recalibrate, because this might be something that is a longstanding thing?
Yeah, great questions. You know, I think typically when we think of an EOC activation, we think of a few days, you know, being activated for a snowstorm or hurricane relief. You know, certainly in this case, we've been activated for a long time. So I think to answer the first part of your question in response to our peers, so we talk regularly to our peers across the state, many of them have different kind of levels of activation. Here in Baltimore City, we're extremely fortunate in that we have the kind of staff capacity to be able to operate 24/7. So I think part of it is about capacity, but to your point, we also really want to be cognizant of staff fatigue. So in addition to our OEM staff, we also have representatives from different agencies who are assigned to the EOC for different shifts. A few weeks ago, we moved to a model where agency representatives, with very few exceptions, are working remotely and doing their OEM shift remotely. So we'll get a contact list for, I think, I think we usually do it two or three weeks out, with agency representatives who are assigned to the EOC, but will be working from their homes. And then we have a core group, mostly of first responders, who are physically coming into the building to help us facilitate that, to allow us to continue the 24/7 coverage. You know, especially in the late evening hours, we rely primarily on police and fire, who would already be working those times. But actually, you know, we actually were having discussions as recently as this afternoon about moving to a shift schedule that will allow for a little more time off, in particular for our OEM staff, so that we can kind of cycle folks in. But we've been changing their schedules to allow for a little more time off and time with family, because we certainly don't want to burn out, and we want to be able to maintain because we certainly don't want to burn out and we want to be able to maintain the same level and even build it up if need be of response from the EOC. But great questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, listen, I thought about that because I know with someone who had to work in EOC for two weeks during the blizzard of 2010, it's like two weeks of my life that I can have no memories from because I was exhausted. So thinking about this this COVID-19, how long we've been in it and how far we have to go. Deputy, can you also talk about how, what, I know that they're gone and they spoke already, but from your standpoint, our public safety needs and how you're making sure to manage that we're meeting them through COVID, but that also we're not forgetting the other things that we have going on in the city from a police and fire standpoint?
Sure, would be happy to talk about that. So in terms of the, the needs that those agencies have related to COVID-19, so we collect up our, the, those needs directly from agencies in Web EOC, not just from public safety, but agencies all over the city, some quasi-agencies. As of this morning, I think we'd received something like 720 different requests for support. So we're monitoring those daily and respond to them as we can. We also have assigned several city stat analysts to monitor not only those requests as they come in and our burn rate of different things. For example, you know, I think BPD is averaging around 290 some masks that they go through, that they burn through each week. So we track all of that, but we also built specific dashboards where we're tracking crime in the city, our fire response, our response times to different call types, calls where we are responding to potential persons under investigation who may have symptoms related to COVID and making sure that we're responding appropriately. We review that every single day, not only with the analysts, but with the entire OEM leadership team. And I think the vast majority of days occasionally we'll have to cancel. We have check-in calls with the Police Department each afternoon to check in on their response, see what they need. And then the, much of the OEM leadership team is from the Fire Department, so we're having those conversations regularly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Okay, here and none. Thank you. Moving on, we're going to go to the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and I believe there's some other folks from the Emergency Food Work Group. I just got that wrong, but I know that we wanted to talk food, food distribution here. So with that, I will hand it over to Director Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman Burnett, Council President Scott, and other members of the City Council. Mr. Young, can you pull up Holly Fresh dot from the Department of Planning, Jasia from Wreckin Parks, and I think Alice Kennedy from the Department of Housing and Community Development are also on the line, and they are partners in this important work, and you should have a presentation, Mr. Young.
Everybody's been elevated. Presentation, you should see now.
Thank you so much. So first of all, I just want to communicate that this is really a true inter-agency initiative, and I am very, very grateful for my colleagues who are on this call today, but also our other colleagues who could not be present. We could not do this work had it not been for the very strong team effort that you're going to hear about. Next slide. So we were tasked with a very audacious goal of minimizing hunger during the pandemic. And in order to achieve this goal, the cross-agency team really had to ground itself in some core principles to make sure that we were approaching this particular challenge in the appropriate way. And the first was that we needed to scale food assistance to meet the growing need. Ever since the governor issued the state of emergency, this team quickly went into action. And we knew that this was going to be for the long haul and that we were going to need to scale our efforts. We also needed to make sure that we had food supplements across age groups and geographic areas. There are many different types of needs in Baltimore, from our school-aged children to our young adults, our immigrant population, our senior citizens. There's just a lot of different needs across the city that we needed to be very conscious of. We needed to offer residents food and grocery choice. A lot of the food that we initially put into the strategy was through the grab-and-go mechanism, which limits choice for individuals. And so we wanted to make sure that we were very conscious of the fact that certain families have very specific needs and that the grab-and-go model, although important and a baseline resource for families, we still wanted to make sure that Baltimore residents did have a degree of choice so that their individual family needs could be met. It was very important that we factor in stay-at-home and social distancing requirements. Addressing food insecurity during a pandemic brings about very unique challenges. And so we wanted to be able to meet both of those needs to feed vulnerable communities, but also to adhere to all of the CDC guidelines regarding congregate gatherings. And we knew it was very important to connect with historically underserved residents who are often overlooked by mass food distribution channels. This is a multi-tiered approach. We are trying to get to as many residents as possible who are experiencing food insecurity. And so we challenge ourselves every single day to make sure that we are going into areas where there is the most need and really having an equity lens through this food distribution model. Next slide, please. So since the state of emergency, we have already served 1.1 million meals in Baltimore. We've done that through 110 youth meal sites, which includes our rec centers, our mobile meal sites, which are ran by DHCD, and also includes targeted support to our HABC communities. We have 21 community sites where we have leveraged great community partners to be a part of our ecosystem and 18 schools across the school district. We have a wonderful partnership with Dr. Santa Lisa's and her team. And just last week, she added 10 additional sidewalk grab-and-go locations. So we have 18 main locations across the city, and then we have the 10 additional sidewalk locations through the partnership with World Central Kitchen, through the Health Department and our partners of Salvation Army and Meals on Wheels. We are servicing 80 senior residential sites. And as I said, just this past week, we kicked off a partnership with World Central Kitchen, which includes the 10 school system sites. But we are also offering a major food meal distribution at Camden Yards. We had 25,000 meals available to us last Saturday, and we will be at Camden Yards every Saturday throughout the state of emergency. What's really great about the Camden Yards and World Central Kitchen model is that it allows us to serve anyone, not just youth and not just seniors, but anyone who is experiencing food insecurity is able to come to Camden Yards, and we do provide enough meals to last a week for anyone who comes to that site. And today, we have also distributed close to 12,000 grocery boxes. Those grocery boxes have 30 pounds of food in them. They feed a family of four for a week. We're going to scale up our grocery boxes strategy. But as you can see, since the beginning of the pandemic, we quickly moved into action with this cross-agency approach. It's a very data-driven approach. I provided for you on this slide a map that overlays SNAP data in the city. So the darker the area, the more concentrated the community is with SNAP recipients. And we use this data to drive the equity lens for how to get this food into the community. So the paler the area, the less SNAP are in that community, the redder or the richer, the color, the more concentrated households of SNAP participants. And those red circles that you see help us to know if there's a meal distribution site within a 0.5-mile radius, walking distance, for those families to be able to access any of the various food and meal distribution sites that we have available. So this is a very data-driven approach. We are trying to get to the most vulnerable communities. We've activated a rich community network to help meet that need, and we acknowledge that we still have a long way to go. But we are looking at the data every single day, trying to make sure that we can get into our most vulnerable communities. Next slide. Last week, the mayor announced what we call the the comprehensive and expanded COVID-19 emergency food strategy. And this takes our baseline work, which I've just reviewed with you on the previous slide, and scales up dramatically over the next 60 days, taking us into late June. We have a goal that we have all agreed to across agencies that we are going to minimize hunger in Baltimore during the pandemic. Our strategy has four elements: meal distribution, food distribution, food retail, and urban agriculture. And we have various agency leads associated with each element of the strategy. And our goal is to quickly be able to really, as I said, deepen our our resources and engagement so that we can really meet the needs of the community. This is a community-driven approach. We are activating many partners outside of city government to help meet the need. We are maximizing city infrastructure, our staff, our logistics team. And we are very appreciative of the mayor's commitment to make an initial investment of $16 million from now to the end of June in order for us to meet this growing need. It is expected that one in every three Baltimore City residents will need some type of food support by the time we get to June. That's a third of our city population. So it's an extraordinary challenge. But we have an amazing team that is very committed that are working on this around the clock. Next slide. As I said, this is not one single agency. This is multiple agencies. The Department of Wreckin Parks is central to this strategy. They provide the main infrastructure for meals distribution at our 42 rec centers. They are open seven days a week. And they provide more meals than any other agency on a daily basis, including the school system. The Department of Housing and Community Development, my colleague Alice Kennedy, who is on the panel with me today, she is the lead for our mobile sites. We have 25 locations across the city that Alice has been coordinating that effort and making sure that, again, communities that are not connected to schools and not connected to our rec centers have access to food. You've heard from Dr. Santa Lisa's, we have those 18 school sites plus the 10 sidewalk locations. The Housing Authority of Baltimore City has been a great partner. We provide mobile meals at all of the eight housing authorities, and we are also providing grocery boxes to those communities. The Health Department is the lead for the seniors and the medically fragile community, and they have been doing an extraordinary job of meeting that very specialized need. The Family League is a supporter in curating meals and activating the community sites. And then, as I said, we have many, many community partners across the city that have helped us to be able to broaden our reach and deepen our engagement. It's also important that we acknowledge the Department of Transportation, the Department of General Services, and the Department of Finance. They provide all kinds of logistical support to this effort. The Department of Planning leads our policy efforts. They are also very critical to our community engagement strategy. All of the mapping that we use to support this strategy comes through Holly and her amazing team. And she has done an extraordinary job of setting the stage and making sure that we are connected to what's happening nationally so that we have a very informed strategy. The Office of Performance Management and Innovation is our partner in making sure that we have a data-driven approach and that we're monitoring and quantifying all of the work that we're doing on a daily basis. And as I've said, the Department of Housing and Community Development very much leads our mobile strategy. And it has been one of the agencies who, with Wreckin Parks, has been making meals available to families ever since the first day of the state of emergency. So this is absolutely a multi-agency approach, and we are continuing to grow the strategy because the demand continues to increase. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I would ask the committee to limit to just one question as we are
Yeah, I have a question.
Going deep into the evening, so just one question for a committee member. We'll start with Council President Scott and then go to Councilmember Henry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Edwards. I just have a question about trying to make sure we're having the greatest impact as possible. And wanted to know, I spent my Saturday up at CC Jackson at my childhood wreck passing out the the grocery boxes, and I know we had the thing at Oriole Park, but wanted to know for that one in particular, how are we able to track and trace that who from Baltimore City actually were able to get those meals? Was there any mechanism for that? But also knowing where it is, I just know that it's hard for a lot of the people in Baltimore need to get there. I wanted to see have we considered like trying to work with those folks and moving it around to Mont Damon or Pimlico and other places across the city where people have better access?
So, thank you, Council President Scott. Those are two very important questions. First of all, last weekend was the first weekend for our partnership with World Central Kitchen. And I would call last weekend the pilot. We will be there again this weekend. World Central Kitchen is expanding their relationships in Baltimore. And so we are looking at various sites across the city where we can make this resource available to other families. And so that is on, that is one of the plans. We, World Central Kitchen is also partnering with local restaurants in the city and some of our And some of our community sites have actually been delivered food from World Central Kitchen. So for instance, today Liberty Rec and Tech received a delivery from World Central Kitchen. And we're using that community site to make that resource available. So we are looking at different locations where we can have a similar type of setup that we have at Camden Yards. But we are also activating existing partners in the network and giving them access to those resources. And they can distribute it via their channels at the community level.
So just a follow-up. So we will see that, like, that partnership move. Can you guys, because I think it's great that they're handing it out to other folks. But I think that we all know that where there's a big effort around, big effort in this big promotion around people where they could come. I think we would get more people to come there. So I would just hope that we can hear in the future about having that big event kind of move around if possible so that we can get to deeper into the need and then also supporting the other programs that we have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henry?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I was able to find the map that I was looking for. I just want to thank Tisha and her team. We've had a lot of interactions trying to get additional food sites in my district, which we've managed to do. And as far as I can tell, the map that's up there for the COVID-19 free food sites is accurately showing everything available to the fourth district. I just want to say thank you and move on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So what I'm going to ask, again, I know we're moving late into the evening. From here, I'm just going to ask for quick agency updates. And I'm going to ask that the council members hold their questions into the very end. That way, we can just fly right through the rest of the presentation. With that, we're going to move to housing. I believe we had Commissioner Braverman on here. I'm sure he still is.
I'm here, Chairman.
Yeah, just any quick updates. Again, my apologies, this is going so late into the evening.
Well, good evening, Chairman Burnett and President Scott and members of the committee. It's been very, very informative, though, I'm sure for everybody. So I'm glad that we all have this opportunity. I'll be extremely brief. We submitted a bill report. The bill report contains largely the content that I'd want to share with you and the committee this evening. We also attached a copy of our response, our COVID emergency response and action plan. And that's available on our website as well. That really details how the Department of Housing and Community Development has repositioned itself and its services to be able to stay functionally, operational, but accommodate the safety of our customers and our staff and importantly, Baltimore communities. That's a forward-facing document. And also within that, embedded within that, and also at the Joint Information Center, we put out a really sort of one-page, red light, green light, yellow light analysis of our services and how they're impacted. So the public can see at a glance, a little more in-depth in that one document on our website, but more sort of at a glance, working with the Joint Information Center. So we largely remain operational. That's due to the creativity and innovation of the leadership in the Department of Housing and Community Development. Some great leadership that creatively approached the problem to keep us largely operational. Wanted to thank my team for that incredible work. I wanted to indicate that, again, we're largely moving forward and to support the framework and the permitting and regulatory responsibilities that we have. But we also sort of repositioned a good part of the agency to support the meal service that Chief Edwards just spoke to. And that is that probably more than 45 staff members have moved from one responsibility or another to support that larger meal distribution to deliver about 800,000 of those meals since roughly March 17. That cuts across different divisions in order to be able to do that. And then our analytics team have supplied a great deal of the mapping and the data analytics to support the targeting and the sharing of that data with the public. So that's an extraordinary effort and largely on the food delivery and meal service side led by Alice Kennedy, who's here. And if you would permit it, Chairman Burnett, I would just like to give her one moment. Some extraordinary work's been done to see if she had anything to add. So Alice, if you're still here.
Commissioner Braverman, Council President Scott, Chairman Burnett. And it's actually, I want to say, it's really nice to see so many colleagues' faces that I haven't seen in so long. So I want to put that out there to anybody else. The program that we're running in support of what Tisha spoke of earlier is our summer food program that we've launched as the Emergency Summer Food Program, which is completely different structure than how we normally run the program during the summer. So very quickly, we were able to prop up a fleet of refrigerated trucks. And we're running five mobile routes across the city, as Director Edwards said, instead of our normal summer mobile route of one mobile route. And we are also running three delivery routes, providing meals to all of those 42 rec centers with the staff support of other divisions within the agency, as Commissioner Braverman said. So this is an effort that looks different than what you all are normally used to seeing over the summer. But it's extremely important. Happy that we've been able to be able to support roughly about 800,000 meals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman?
I think the chairman's frozen. Mr. Vice Chair take over.
Okay. And this is why we have Vice Chair.
Who are you, a defendant?
The downside is that I don't have a copy of the list that the chair has for who he was supposed to call on next. Marguerite?
Marguerite, if you could just have Chris go through. We can hear you, Marguerite, so Chris could talk through yours for now.
Can you, okay, sorry, y'all. It crashed on my computer. One, if you could bump me back up to a panelist, Kalen, I'm back up. Sorry about that, y'all.
Should be good now.
I'm back. All right.
Hey, all right.
So, thank you. So next on my list, while we're talking about housing, I just wanted to jump over. We're going to go with HABC and the planning. I believe we have Director Abrams on line.
Yeah, I'm muted, Doc.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
We can hear you.
All right, sorry. My battery just went very low on my computer. I apologize. Good evening, Chairman Burnett, Council President Scott, and all the council members and my colleagues with the city. It's great to see you all. I haven't seen you all in such a long time. Hello, everyone. So we have two sections to really talk about. The first is the outreach. I do have Bill Wells on the line with me, and I will be turning one section over to him. So as far as our outreach, as you all know, we're the largest landlord of affordable housing here in the city. And so we have been doing a lot of outreach in trying to make sure that we are educating our residents. But at the same time, there are a lot of things on the HUD side that we had to implement. And so, of course, for all the families that have been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, we have been doing rent adjustments throughout the area. We have completed since April 1st over 700 rent adjustments. And what does that mean? It means that the Housing Authority will pay the entire rent to landlords and to the public housing sites so that our residents will pay zero rent until this pandemic is over. So anyone that is affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, if they're laid off or lose income, they have no risk of being evicted because we're covering their entire rent. We have launched a campaign called Everyone Is At Risk. We have placed 250 lawn signs on each one of our properties just to get our residents to understand social distancing and also the CDC requirement about hand washing and all those different things. We continue to run emergency work orders. We continue to do our inspections. Next week, we will be slightly implementing a different piece in the Housing Authority. We will be making sure that we now, not only emergency work orders, but we're also conducting routine work orders. And we will be putting vacant units back online. We have our contractors lined up to go back in. So we're really trying to, right now, we're 95% of our staff, they're working from home. That was a heavy lift for us. But that's something that we were able to do in the six weeks that we have been working through the teleworking process. As far as the digital divide, I'm not sure if you all are aware, but the Housing Authority launched a Connect Home activity about a year ago where we gave out about 500 tablets to our families. And we pay for the data connection because we understood that a lot of our families did not have the network in their homes. So the Housing Authority, we pay for two years of digital service, and we continue to do that. So we're happy that those children, they're able to use those devices that we were able to give out. And like I said, we gave out about 500. Bill Wells can talk just real briefly about the food activity. We have been working with Holly and with Tisha on making sure that we're able to service the families. And another piece that I wanted to add is that we continue to do wellness checks with our seniors and our disabled. So we have conducted since March 20th to April 20th. We have continued to do the wellness check because we have checked on over almost 6,000 wellness checks calls that we have placed during that time span. Bill?
Yeah, so Tisha covered a lot of our involvement to date with the food efforts. And we were able to stand up some of the HABC sites when the city schools had their spring break so that we could shift and Tisha could shift staff and we could shift to being able to provide food service through some of those sites. Today, the first half of the HABC family sites received the grocery boxes in partnership with the State of Maryland, the Maryland National Guard, and the Maryland Food Bank. And tomorrow, the other half of the sites will receive those food boxes for those sites. And those all will be distributed to residents by the end of this week, particularly prioritizing the elderly and those residents who cannot manage to carry those boxes, their 30-pound boxes of groceries. So we continue to try and realize those efforts that Holly and planning started well over a month ago, trying to figure out how we could get our hands around getting something to provide food security to the most at-risk parts of the city. So we continue to work with all of those partners, as Tisha said. And we'll be looking forward to trying to provide more access throughout this period.
Thank you. So it looks like we may have lost Director Abrams. So unless there's anything else major, we're going to keep it moving. Let's go to, I believe there was a presentation from the planning department.
Yes, I'm going to put that up. This is Chris Rye, the Director of the Planning Department, Chairman Burnett, President Scott, if he's still there, and the committee. I don't want to be redundant. So if you could switch to the next slide. Mr. Young, I'm just going to touch briefly on what we're doing and introduce our Assistant Director for Policy Work, Stephanie Smith, and our Food Policy Director, Hallie. Oh, sorry. Holly, for your time. So our, you know, one of our starting points is just keeping things moving, like you all were all concerned about the financial impacts of this virus on the city budget. We're very focused on keeping the development engine here going in the city. So we've successfully stood up virtual hearings on five different occasions. We staff three commissions, the Planning Commission, the Stark Commission, and Sustainability Commission, all have met virtually. CHAP had to change some rather significant enabling legislation, and they are about to have their first real virtual hearing. We're also working with the HCD, keeping the permit system going, land use questions, all those kinds of things that we do day in and day out. And I believe we are now on our third revision of the capital budget, third and final revision of the capital budget, which goes in next week. Could you switch to the next slide after this one? I also, I want to talk about our extensive communication work. So we've enhanced the, next slide, please. We've enhanced the capacity of our community planning division. We've added several planners there. They have smaller territories to work with, fewer communities to work with. And they have all been calling. They have been calling neighborhood leaders in the area, many of which are also homebound to discuss the census, the COVID, and any other concerns they're facing during this time. They were given toolkits for resources with food and human services, census, COVID information, accurate information on which websites to consult. And then we're trying to give the neighborhood leaders a deeper form of contact with a familiar city person, not only to highlight challenges, but to lift up what's working on the ground. So they've helped us identify community food sites outside the city's universal locations and highlight concerns about law enforcement presence, your concerns about community access to PPE, et cetera, et cetera. I think we've met with or talked with over 100 community leaders at this point. We also, we stand up the census work. So we've given away $100,000 to really small groups. We meet with them virtually once a week. We also have our Complete Count Committee that also meets once a week. And we support our Planning Academy. So they've been meeting virtually, also keep them abreast of what's going on and solicit their opinion. As Tisha was talking earlier, and Janet, I mean, food policy work has been a big part of what we've been doing lately. And food policy is part of the Office of Sustainability here. It is under Stephanie Smith. So I am, if you can enable Stephanie Smith or elevate Stephanie Smith, Mr. Young.
Guys, can you hear me?
Please, yeah. Thank you.
I can hear me. Hey, Kalen, if you're controlling, can you go up to slide five? We're going to conclude with Holly. Okay, so I just want to, before I dive into this particular slide, I just want to lift up that unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we did not launch our Spring Planning Academy, but we do connect with the 90 alums that we have from our previous cohorts. Because as many of you know, the Planning Academy members are concentrated in some of our communities of high Um because um as many of you know, the Planning Academy members are concentrated in some of our communities of high need. So they're already existing leaders and trusted voices to um not only communicate to us some of the needs in their community, but to also communicate to their neighbors some of the resources that um have come to bear through the city of Baltimore. I also wanted to lift up that within the context of reaching out to our census grantees, we convene them weekly. As you can imagine, they've had to re-calibrate their high-touch outreach to something that might resemble, um you know, just straight-up foam baking and some of these other things that are more high-touch. But what we're doing in that same vein is weaving in information about food resources, human reso-human um services resources into those outreach efforts. So as as a community leader is raising the importance of the census and they're also passing out food and they're also setting up a laptop in the church basement for people to independently fill out the census, we're realizing we're gonna have to multitask our communication because we're telling the same target population a lot of important things. And one of the places where we're able to do that is at um hubs that we call resili-resiliency hubs. And these hubs have existed before this pandemic. And what I think is really important about them is emergency management and emergency response systems have to really be designed to withstand various um disruptions to human life. So this is just one manifestation of of human disruption. It could be um a man-made um issue, it could be um some other type of weather phenomenon. But what makes these resiliency hubs critical is that, one, they are not connected to government buildings and to government um bodies. I think for many people, and that was mentioned earlier in this presentation, I mean, earlier this evening, there are some people that may not ever want to go and receive a benefit or resource from a rec center or school or anything affiliated with the government. But a trusted entity, be it a faith house, be it a community service organization or something else that is not directly and obviously a government entity, may actually be an opportunity for connection that otherwise would not exist. So these hubs um have resources um similar to what you might think of various relief centers. There are supplies, there's connections to food, there's all types of resources that are available. So uh these are just pictures from um our hub at Stillwater, um Still Meadow, excuse me, Church in southwest Baltimore. Um there's a lot of different activities happening there. Um but a lot of these um hubs were identified because they were already go-to um structures for community members. Can you go to the next slide, please? Next slide, thank you. So these um hubs, we currently have nine that are identified, seven that are active. I think it's important for the members of the council, um you know, um Mr. Chair, to know that we do a needs assessment to try to figure out what are some of the threats and vulnerabilities in certain geographies that make it um important to consider and find and identify the right partner to um cite a resiliency hub. And I just cannot underscore um the the work that these sites do, oftentimes patching in where there are blind spots, where there are sometimes um a lack of touch for a variety of reasons from some of the more mainstream um relief um pathways. Um these have been really um great hubs for us to triage a lot of resources from food, from um PPE to a variety of just information that people need. And I think it may be worth, you know, I hate to volunteer more work in the future, having just a drill down um hearing about what these can mean as a long-term strategy for resilience in general because we are obviously vulnerable to multiple threats, of which the pandemic is currently just one. But I also want to um lift up that the work um that's being done by the Office of Sustainability is not just within the context of the resiliency hubs themselves. There are a lot of community-based interventions and community-based grassroots efforts around food, around PPE, around even just emotional support. And um we've been able, through an extensive network of um partners, that we've been able to assemble as a constellation of support in addition to the resiliency hubs. We've been able to work with them to support resources and connections for people that are engaged in anything from urban gardening and urban farming all the way to people that have other various skills, be it um um sewing, manufacturing. Um there's a lot of strength in our communities, and if there's nothing else we can kind of take away from this moment, I think that the resiliency hubs and the work that's being done um with other community-based efforts that are not directly related to the government should be a source of strength that we build upon post-pandemic, not just something that we see as a momentary uh benefit in this time of um stress. So I want to um honor and appreciate that we're under time constraints. And at this time, I would like to tee up um Holly Freystadt to continue giving some additional texture to things that we weren't able to discuss related to our food policy efforts.
Hey, good evening. I'm Holly Freystadt, Food Policy Director for Baltimore City. Can you please go to the next slide? I would like to lift up three key points. The first one, I would like to talk about SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, otherwise known as food stamps. We have been working as a city to get online SNAP for approximately 10 years. Um we were able to change the farm bill many years ago. We were then be able to be a pilot city to go online SNAP. And with COVID-19, we're able to advocate very strongly with the governor to have the State of Maryland to be an online SNAP um city and state. This is extremely important when you think about the number of residents in Baltimore City on SNAP. Prior to COVID-19, we had 166,000 residents on SNAP. As Tisha already referred to, we have a SNAP data map. This is a very intentional data map because in the past, we've used healthy food priority areas and have been doing food environment briefs based off of that data. But all that is outdated because everything is moving so fast with COVID-19. So because we're in a state of a disaster, we were able to get the SNAP data and I will continue to get that SNAP data monthly. So what you see here is prior to COVID-19 SNAP data um in March, before March, and soon we will see what month March looks like. We've seen over 40% increase in SNAP um enrollments nationally. I think it's even higher in Baltimore City. We're waiting to see that data. And so the intentionality around these maps is to drive our strategies and to see how we need to expand or change our strategies over time. And we know because we have healthy food priority areas and lots of people are limited access to transportation, access to grocery stores, low income, um and low healthy food availability in their neighborhoods, people need to be able to get their food at home. And so with online SNAP, this would allow for people to order online and to have the food delivered to them. We have two approved retailers at this point. It is Amazon and ShopRite, and those were the original two pilot retailers. However, other retailers have applied and we're waiting to see who else will be accepted into um online SNAP. So that is one um relatively large success. It will roll out in the end of May. Um so that is one piece. We also understand that there is no one-size-fits-all strategy here. So that's one component to SNAP. Another component that we're really trying to encourage is for people to understand to apply for SNAP. Um because of the CARES Act and the pandemic, there's maximum benefits on SNAP for the next two months, meaning they can get the most amount of money that they've gotten in a long time for SNAP, and it's easier to be able to apply. You still have to meet um eligibility requirements of income. So please understand you need to have low-income eligibility in order to be able to go on SNAP. So that's one high-level component I wanted to mention on SNAP. Um another component is my team, I'm in the Department of Planning, we have many food planners. We're working on the ongoing strategies for the city. So our job is to look forward while everyone else is working on operations and logistics at this point. And so where we're looking now is if the numbers continue to increase with COVID-19, what's our strategy? So what we're working on right now is our home-delivered food box, grocery box strategy, and it's in collaboration with 2-on-1 in MAPS. And we are working on a screening um and referral system where we're gonna get a list of the people who will need home-delivered boxes. And then we're in the preliminary um conversations right now, working with Amazon, who's gonna be able to do the home-delivered um component of the strategy of going from the convention center or wherever we're housing our main sort of distribution center to people's homes. Um so that is a contract that we're working on right now. And for the first month, it is gonna be pro bono from Amazon, and that's gonna be one of the things that we're looking at. And we were able to do that from looking at all the other food policy directors around the country and what their strategies were on how they addressed as their cities became hotspots, what they were doing next. And that is one of the examples of how we're benefiting from this network of food policy directors around the country. Um and just to conclude, I'm going back to our attention to the map. You will see here, this is a draft map, and this is really today's, really today's status of all the different sites in Baltimore City that are serving food. Um so you are going to be able to see here that we've heard from many other agencies, but you're gonna see all the grab-and-go use site meals that were referred to. You will see all the older adult meals, sorry, meals, um and you will also see HBC sites. And also remember, we have food pantries from the Food Bank. We want to keep them activated. There is a place where you can get choice of food and also produce. And so this is the beginning of the food environment maps and briefs that we we will, we will be preparing for each of the council members and the legislative districts, like we have done previously uh for our food environment brief. So those will be coming um in the next couple of weeks for your COVID-19 food environment maps and briefs so you can have a deep-dive understanding of what is in your food environment. Um with that, I will turn it over to Chris um to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris.
We're actually gonna um hold, hold on questions. Um just in the interest of time, it is getting very late, uh and we will absolutely reconvene this um moving forward. I did want to jump over really quickly to, because based on the types of questions I know my colleagues are getting and I've been getting at the Joint Information Center, I wanted to spotlight just two more agencies. Uh and want to thank all of the agency representatives and staff for sticking it out with us this evening. Um but I want to jump over to uh Mayor's Office of Homeless Service and Finance. Homeless Service talk about the work with the homeless population and what's been done there. It's been a hot-button issue. And Finance to talk about the, just a brief overview, the the current fiscal uh outlook moving forward. Well, we can jump over to Mayor's Office of Homeless Service first. We have, Jerry Anthony, are you?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Burnett, um and Council President Young and other distinguished members of the City Council uh for today's convening. Um so as raised by other members uh on this call, um there are members of our community who are disproportionately vulnerable to the effects of COVID-19, to include uh individuals who are experiencing homelessness. Um while social distancing, si-social distancing and staying home have, they've all emerged as uh effective strategies for flattening the curve. Um it's not really realistic, a realistic prospect for someone that does not have a home. And so as a result, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services has been working pretty aggressively to uh employ a number of strategies to aid our our neighbors who are experiencing episodes of homelessness. Um I I'll be brief and just want to talk about a few of the things that we have undertaken um to try to prevent the spread of of COVID-19. So one, uh the Commissioner alluded to earlier, uh about three weeks ago, we effectively moved 157 individuals out of our uh shelters into motels. This um exercise was done as an opportunity to allow individuals to socially distance. Um as many of you are aware, our current shelter conditions do not allow for individuals um to appropriately social distance in accordance with the guidance provided by the CDC. So this move um allowed individuals to go and be able to socially distance uh in accordance with those guidelines. In addition, um to that, we also moved, transitioned one of our emergency shelters um to a new location, which allowed uh the men at that site to be able to to socially distance um in accordance with CDC guidelines and have completed that move as well. Um over the course of the last few weeks, uh again, we worked very closely with the Health Department to develop um hospital discharge protocols just to ensure that individuals who were being released um were being tested um or being asked to go isolate, who did not have a location where they could safely go and isolate. Um we've been making hotel rooms available to those individuals to isolate and supporting those individuals while they were there, while they are there. Um we have additionally, over the course of the last two weeks, um had a few uh a few occasions, two occasions where we have had or seen um some development of clusters of individuals within our shelter system who have tested positive um for COVID and have worked with the Health Department, partners at Healthcare for the Homeless um to quickly go in, assess individuals, um move individuals to isolation um to to stop the spread. So we've been uh pretty proactive in our efforts to to screen and uh take action when and where appropriate. Um and we'll continue to to make those um to make those decisions and move rapidly to to decrease the spread. Um we are continuing outreach efforts. However, our outreach efforts have pivoted from um going into encampments and doing uh what we normally call outreach and engagement to really providing tactical support to individuals who are in encampments. So what that looks like is um on a, every other week, we're going out and taking supplies, such as handwashing materials. Um several of our large encampments recently got porta-potties um that we placed there so that individuals have an opportunity to have access to restrooms, um taking out care kits um and food items just to ensure that individuals who are not in shelter or um do not have access to homes have an opportunity to practice those um safe hygiene practices that the CDC is advocating for um to assist in stopping the spread. I'll stop there and I can take any questions that people may have.
Again, we're gonna hold on questions. Um I'll ask the council members to email you uh if they have any follow-up. Uh wanna jump over to Finance?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just do a quick overview of of COVID-related expenses and just general fiscal outlook. So uh by our, by our projection, we spent about $20 million on COVID-related expenses to date. Uh we are expecting through fiscal year '20, so that's, you know, through through June 30, 30th, to spend between $40 and $50 million. Um if this were to go all the way through uh through the first quarter of next uh fiscal year '21, so that'd be 180-day response, it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 to 80 million. Some of the expenses that we are incurring, so as some of the, you've heard them throughout this uh various presentations, but hotels for isolation uh and high-risk uh people, staffing at at those shelters, PPE, um premium pay, uh some IT costs associated with teleworking, the Business Stabilization Fund, food, and then expanded testing. Uh in terms of, you know, the the whole list, the big picture, we are doing this, as has been reported earlier, we are doing a $64 million write-off of revenue. That is mostly driven by our like tourism and uh related uh revenues such and and transportation-related revenues. So speed of red light cameras, parking tickets, uh parking tax, uh amusement tax, um et cetera. We expect to end the year somewhere in the $42 million range, uh depending on how uh how much longer the we, the social distancing were to last. For fiscal year '21, we are expecting a $103 million budget shortfall. I just want to remind this body that the the executive summary uh budget will be uh released next Wednesday, May the 6th.
Thank you. Um, okay. Uh again, thank you to all of the agency staff. Uh I believe we still have um Councilmember Henry, Councilmember Slifer on the line. Uh before we go to public testimony, uh we have an amendment um to strike the, there we go, it's coming up on your screen. Um when this was uh, this resolution was initially introduced, uh the full title of the resolution included reference to Wuhan. Um at the time, seemed like a good idea to make that reference, and that's what we were, the information that we were going on um at the, you know, at that time. Uh we now know it's important to uh remove that reference uh from this. And so we're gonna ask, uh there's the amendment on your screen, we want to remove that out. The way the process has to work is we need to remove it, uh vote for it in committee. We'll take it to a full vote on second reader for the full council, uh which will change the title and and root and and make that, remove that reference uh and then bring it back into committee as we continue to do updates on a uh regular basis. So with that.
I'm, I move to, uh I move the amendment.
There, a second. Councilmember Slifer, are you here?
I can see you.
I'm here. I got a question on that. So what would the new title be?
Uh it's just gonna say coronavirus. It'll, it'll say, uh, you know, it'll just be, uh, sorry, I don't have the full thing in front of me. So it's, it'll read informational hearing, Baltimore's strategic response to the coronavirus. And as as currently written, uh it says Baltimore Strategic Response to the Wuhan Coronavirus, which will be geographical reference from it.
Uh is there, did somebody explain uh the the need for that or? I must have missed. Is there, did somebody explain the, the need for that or, I must have missed it?
So one of the things that we want to get away from is stigmatizing a region. It's now, we got more information from the CDC and other world health organizations and other experts. It's not quite clear that the community transmission of this disease started in Wuhan just yet. It could have been that someone got it from somewhere else and went to a market in that city. It may have initiated the spread, so we want to remove the stigma of the, of the, you know, having that label. It's a small gesture, it's not a huge, huge deal, but wanted to make sure that, you know, we are lockstep with best practices from public health experts and sociologists and that kind of thing when it comes to how this will be remembered historically. So we thought it was important to remove that out.
Okay.
There a second? Councilmember Slifer, you still there?
Yeah, sounds like it failed for a second.
Siri?
Chairman, you can move it without objection.
All right, we will move it without objection. And for that, we also then need to move the full resolution. Is there a motion to vote on the resolution? Or any objections?
Move the resolution as amended?
Yep. Move the, a motion to move the resolution as amended.
Perhaps that should be moved without objection as well.
The proper, you could, you have the motion. You don't need a second. You can just go to roll call.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Burnett is a yes. Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
And Councilmember Slifer?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was, it was muted. I thought it was unmuted, but yes.
All right, the motion passed. This bill will be placed on second reader on Monday, May 11, 2020. Full council will review and take a vote at that time. Thank you, council members and staff for sticking with us through that. We are now going to move to public testimony. We will now take testimony from the public, from the attendees who called in. However, the attendees who called in to speak cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the host one by one. Once you are unmuted, if you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are muted. The attendee will hear two beeps when they are unmuted and we ask that you please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if a speaker is inaudible and we are unable to hear, hear you, we will direct you to call back or provide your testimony in the chat function of WebEx. And I'm going to hand it over to our WebEx host, Caitlin Young from the president's office.
Mr. Chair, there are no call-in folk for public testimony. If you just give me one second, for those who are called in or who are part of WebEx, I want to post the instructions for raising your hand briefly. For those who are here and part of the WebEx, from the public, you can raise your hand by clicking on those three dots that you see right next to the X. You can click the raise hand function. We'll leave this up for just a moment for anyone who is part of the public and would like to speak. Mr. Chair, I do not see any hands raised. And again, there are no call-in members of the public present, so back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So with that, we are going to close out this hearing. Again, I want to thank all of the hard-working city agency leaders, staff, frontline workers, volunteers. This is truly, this response has truly, truly been a all-hands-on-deck. People are stepping up all across the city to help out and lend a hand for our community. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you. Chair of the Health Committee, someone that's joining you in this fight and trying to make sure that we have, you know, the best public health response across the country for the citizens of Baltimore. And we will, again, we'll move this to second reader and then bring it back into committee. I will work with the mayor's office and the council president's office to work out another date sometime in a few weeks. We know that our agency staff are working around the clock on this and we do not want to continue to bring you in, especially late, late into the evening, like we went in tonight on a frequent basis, but we do find it important that we be publicly educated. This is also being aired on Charm TV and will be available online. For those who weren't able to join us this evening, we will be posting it on social media so you can watch. With that, I want to say thank you again to the committee, to the agencies, to the public for joining us this evening. We are going to conclude the hearing. And if we were, if there's anyone here in this room other than staff, I would say check under your seats, make sure you don't leave anything, but it's just me and Marguerite and Dara Low from my team here in City Hall. But we are glad to see you all, at least from your computers this evening. So have a good evening, wash your hands, wear a mask and be safe.